Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Wareham Planning Board meeting of Monday, September 12th, 2022. The meeting is called to order at 6:00 PM. Please note that Mr. King is unavailable this evening, so I will be acting as chair. Starting on my left, Ms. Quirk?
Here.
Mr. Baptiste?
Yeah.
Ms. Gleason?
Yeah.
Mr. Corbett?
Here.
And Mr. Shanks is here. Before we go on to preliminary business, just to let any of you know who may be here for Fearing Hill, or Zero Route 25, or Dodie Street, those three are being continued till probably the 26th, but I can't say for certain until we actually take the vote. So, moving on.
Is my mic on, Joe?
My mic is on. I'll speak more directly into it. The first item of business is Baypoint Club LLC Phase Two, 10 Baypoint Drive, a covenant, a request for a covenant release, and partial tripartite release of funds for this evening. Is someone here to speak to that request?
Yeah, you have your mic.
All right. Mr. Buckland, you have thoughts or advice on what we should do?
Yes, I think you should, since you've already accepted a security in the form of a tripartite agreement, you should release the covenant that's been issued for the, that was filed for the subdivision plan for Phase Two and Three. That would be for the portion of the, of Phase Two and Three, which is, Charlie, correct me if I'm right, is this Beacon Street?
No, if, if we release the whole covenant without a reference to Beacon Street remaining, you won't have any security on Beacon Street. So, if, if you release the covenant that's existing, which is on record now, as a release of covenant document, and don't make mention of the fact that you're only releasing that portion of the subdivision, which is Starboard Drive, and not Beacon Street, then Beacon Street won't have security.
Okay.
So, you need to be careful how you make the wording in that release.
What would you say, what would you recommend?
I can give you a rough idea.
Right. So, perhaps before we get the wording of the release, we could let the board members ask questions, and then make a motion based on your recommendation.
Sure, I prefer discussion.
Yes, because I have a couple of questions. Ms. Quirk?
I don't know. How much money, how much money is he looking for?
Okay, that was going to be my question. Are we separating the release of covenant and the release of funds as two different items?
In this case, yes, because the, the tripartite, there's, there's a, a security already put in place for the Phase, Phase One, that didn't have a covenant release associated with it, official form of the, of the subdivision rules and regulations require, requires the release of covenant form be filled out, and it wasn't done. So, it's really a pro forma kind of action, a administrative mistake that, on, on their part, in not getting that secured before they proceeded.
Okay, so, back to Mr. Baptiste's question. We have a two-part issue before us. One is the release of covenant, and then the second is, there's been a request for release of funds, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and, so, then back to your question, for the second half, I think they're looking for, what, $200,000 or $300,000, there's an exact number, $341,000?
Correct.
Okay.
And we have, and we have a review by our consulting engineer on the, on the costs and the response to that request.
Right, which is what Charlie's email of today was.
That's correct.
Okay. More questions, Mr. Baptiste?
Nope, wait for Charlie comes over the number, I think I'll be satisfied.
Okay, so, let's, let's take this in two parts, then. We'll discuss the release of covenant, then the release of funds, but let's get all our questions out on the table. Ms. Gleason?
I guess my question would be the, what is the relationship between the covenant and the funds, if there is any?
Well, there absolutely is, so, but do you?
The relationship is that the covenant is supposed to be released when the, the funds are put up, and it wasn't, that particular action wasn't done, so it was an administrative action that wasn't complete when the funds were put up for the security.
Was it requested?
It was, it was, it was, it was requested, but it wasn't officially done.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Corbett? Okay, so, I have a couple of questions. First, on the release of covenant. This release of covenant only covers, and it's going to go back to what Mr. Rowley said, I want to know what the scope of this covenant is with respect to the site plan and subdivision.
They're, they are constructing units in Phase Two, and they want release of the covenant for, so they can continue on the building of those units in Phase Two.
So, when we make our motion, this release of covenant would only address those units on Starboard Drive designated as Phase Two on the plan? The sewer work, the street work, streetlights, and such as that, and that will be secured by a bond?
That's correct.
Okay, does the bond on the tripartite agreement adequately cover those items?
Yeah, it was already approved, yeah, it was already reviewed and approved.
Those line, I, I read it, but I was trying to map it, so.
Right, right.
All right, but it does not cover, as Mr. Rowley said, Beacon Street, which was Phase Three?
Correct.
So, we need to word our release of covenant appropriately to, to exclude Beacon Street from the release?
Right.
Okay.
It stays under covenant.
I have some suggested wording, if you want to hear it.
When we go to the motion, I think that would be great, and then I'm going to get your input in a minute, so I just want to finish with the board questions.
All right, so, go ahead.
Is that okay, or do you want to?
Yeah, except that you don't have a document in front of you that you can actually refer to for a motion, so I think you need that.
We, yeah, we, we don't, we have the covenant, that's all I've got here.
I know, but we, we don't have a form of release of covenant that you can actually refer to at this time. I've got a, just a rough draft marked up in pen and everything else, it's not official.
Okay, would you like to share that, then?
True.
I'll hold my questions, then, until you finish.
Well, basically, it says that the undersigned being a majority, the planning board of the town of Wareham, Plymouth County, Mass, hereby releases lots one, two, and three with driveway access on Starboard Drive only, and not on Beacon Street, shown on a plan entitled definitive subdivision plan Baypoint Club Mixed-Use Development, recorded in Plan Book 65, page 780, at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, dated August 2021. I don't remember the exact date, I'd have to get that. From the provisions of a covenant agreement dated September 21st, 2021, recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, Book 55766, page 226, in exchange for security in the form of a tripartite agreement, recorded in Book 56714/74. So, okay. And that's, that's what the language, in my opinion, should, should read, because there are two buildings in Phase Two which actually have driveway access on Beacon Street, but it's not being constructed.
Oh, so it's not an entire release of Phase?
Not all of Phase Two, no, it is not. So, that's why I suggested the wording with driveway access on Starboard Drive only, and not on Beacon Street. The only second aspect of it is this, that I researched the information that I have, and you'll recall that there is supposed to be the rebuilding of a sewer main in Onset Avenue, to take it away from the waterfront, and take it down toward the pump station, which is at South Water Street. I can't find that there's ever been any security posted for that, so that would have to remain on the covenant, and it should be referenced here also, and I don't have that wording put in here.
Okay, so, clearly, before we move forward, it looks like we have some more work to do on the wording of the release of the covenant.
Yeah, it's a simple thing to do. I can, I can put this together, and I can forward it to Ken with copies to use, so they'll be ready for the next meeting if you want.
Right, well, that's, let's, I think that'll be where we end up with our motion, but let's, let's, it's unfortunate the applicant is not here tonight to, to, to discuss this.
Perhaps I'm showing my naivete, but if it's so still enmeshed in stuff that's not complete, is there a reason why we're?
That's what, what I'd, our determination is.
Well, what we did was, we took their money so that they could have a release of the covenant, and what we have to do is set up the, release the covenant officially, so that their, their money can apply to the work that has to be done.
Okay.
Yeah, so, we, we, the tripartite agreement, I believe, transferred a little over a million dollars to an escrow account, right, the property?
Essentially, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's a, it's a, it's an account that's handled by the bank, the developer in the town.
Right.
That's why I call it a tripartite.
Right, so, we have some funds, they've done some work, they want some funds back. I think what we have to, and we have to determine if and how much of those funds that they want, but before, I think what Ken's saying is, we have an administrative issue in that we signed the tripartite agreement without doing the associated part of the covenant. Unfortunately, it looks like the tripartite agreement didn't completely cover the scope of work, at least through modification two.
It covers the scope of work on Starboard Drive.
But modification two was more than just Starboard, Starboard Drive, right?
Yes, includes Beacon Street?
Right.
As well as the requirement that they make the connection in Onset Avenue.
Right, so, the tripartite agreement may be incomplete, so it would not cover the release of covenant completely. So, we're trying, I think what, what we're discussing is, how can we navigate administratively through the complexities of some incomplete documents?
Yeah, okay.
Is that, I'm trying to summarize and looking for you to nod, okay. All right, okay, so, before we close the discussion, I have a, a couple more questions to get on the table, and then we can decide how to move forward. So, Mr. Buckland, can you summarize, because I've been trying to figure this out? We have the original site plan, subdivision plan from August of 2017. There should be a covenant and/or bond associated with that. We have mod one, which should have been, I think, 2019. There should be a covenant and, and/or a bond associated with that. We have modification two, which is what we're talking about now. Right now, we have a covenant and the tripartite agreement, which we're trying to reconcile, and then we have modification three, which we approved this year, which was not considered by the tripartite agreement, so we, we should have a covenant for that agreement, which I couldn't find in the Plymouth Registry of, of Deeds or records. So, could you just summarize where each of those are, each of those are?
The first, the first three phases, the first two phases, Phase One and what was called Phase Two and Phase Three, which is Starboard Drive and Beacon. Those were subdivisions, actual subdivisions of land.
But there were also a site plan.
And there were site plans as well, too, and special permits as well, under, under, there were actually three different separate permits that were issued for those, those projects. The, the modification, the, the last modification, which was the, the seven acre parcel, took on a little bit different character, because it was a, it wasn't, it wasn't the same kind of subdivision as the previous subdivisions, it didn't have the same criteria that applied to the construction of the, of the, of the plan that was shown. But be that as it may, as you said, it does not have a, a bond in place at this time, which would be necessary for them to start on construction of the units, the housing units, within the, within that phase. And the same goes for the other phases. What happened with Phase One is they put up the bond, got the release of covenant that they're looking for.
So, there's a bond for the original site plan and Phase One?
There's a bond for Phase One, that's how they were able to proceed with the construction of the units in Phase One.
And how much money is left on that bond?
I don't have that number with me.
And just the reason I'm asking is because, again, we got another letter from Mr. Salem, which were sort of out of our scope, that would relate not to the, what we're talking about today, but that would relate back to Phase One and that bond.
Right, and when Phase, and when Phase One is, is, when Stone Street or Windward Pines comes forward and asks for a release, final approval of everything in Phase One, we'll have to resolve that with Mr. Salem as to what he said, that, that whatever was necessary, that was made as improvements in the plans that he filed, that Windward Pines filed with us, that all those improvements are made and completed as, as shown on the plans.
Okay, and the only point I was trying to raise is, his concern is subject to that first bond, not what we're discussing today.
That's right, and the release of that.
And there is still funds available, and we're not talking about releasing those funds tonight?
No, we're not.
To deal with that issue?
That's right.
Okay, there's some other work that needs to be done, sidewalks and some streetlight stuff that we agreed to. Okay, so, we're talking about Phase Two, and then I think what I heard you say is for modification three, which was Phase Four, we need to make sure the covenant has been filed at least, and then before they begin, either the covenant has to be filed, or the, or the, the bond has to be agreed to, right?
That's right.
And I couldn't find a record of that covenant being filed.
No, and, and, and going through the, the decision on the, on the definitive subdivision, apparently the, the conditions of approval did not include the requirement for a covenant, that's just a requirement in the subdivision rules and regulations.
Mr. Chairman, it wouldn't have, all it was is a special permit.
Okay.
There's no definitive plan under Chapter 41 that is ascribed to Section Four or Phase Four.
So, there's no, there's no bond or?
Not unless the special permit required a bond to be posted, but it's not a definitive plan, so there's no covenant, there's no bond, there's no street construction.
That's why I couldn't find it.
That's right. It, it doesn't apply.
So, we have no protection if they don't perform the work for that?
Actually, we do.
You do, through an occupancy permit.
It's, it's a modification of the original subdivision plan, actually, it includes, it annexes this parcel of land to the subdivision, and, and it modifies Baypoint Drive as part of the, of the, of the, of the design and the construction of this, of the Phase Four project.
But as we're considering release of funds, which covenant and/or bond should we hold back on until that's completed?
I think you should set up a bond for Phase Four, if it, if he applies forbidding permits.
I don't know how you do that, unless, unless the special permit or the modification transferred the construction of the first 1,300 feet of Baypoint Drive into Phase Four, it's still a part of Phase Two. I'd have to read the document and see whether or not it got transferred. If it didn't, you've got a special permit.
There's no transfer, Charlie, it's all part of the one, one big project.
Okay, so, rather than taking up tonight, time tonight, that question is beyond the scope of what's before us. Could we find a place on a future agenda to have a discussion of how Phase Four is?
Yeah, I think what we do is, we get Mr. Fay in here as well, too, and?
Yeah, it would be help if the applicant were here tonight to have this discussion.
It surely would.
Okay, and before we close on this discussion and decide on action, I'd like to make a point. The applicant is requesting a release of funds from this covenant, subject to whatever wording we finally come up with. When they calculated the release of funds, or actually, when we calculated as a board the funds to be set aside, we added a 35% escalator to the project. So, they calculated an amount, Charlie verified the amount, although it doesn't look like they did it right, but, and then we added 35% on, and they agreed. Now, when their request, and that, we only did that on a whole, we didn't do 35% line item by line item. My problem is, mathematically, they're requesting a relief of the 35% line item by line item, and I think that's inappropriate and incorrect, because the 35% was a coverage for unforeseen overruns, unexpected issues, a variety of things we discussed.
Are you saying that's another line item, essentially?
It should, it's another line item, it's not an item on every single line item.
That's not, that's not correct, Mr. Chairman.
I went back and reviewed it, that's how we?
It's not, it's not correct, it's 35% attached to the final amount, but you can calculate it as 35% for each item, and it'll come out the same thing.
No, it won't, not if you do the release. Mathematically, it will, the problem is, is when we, we added the 35, and 35% on, it was for unforeseen?
No, it wasn't, sir.
Yes, specifically?
No, I'm sorry, that's not correct, sir. It's added, it's added for inflation, and it's added for costs that would be ensued to the town if they had to go in and do the same work. It's not for unforeseen circumstances, not at all.
Inflation is an unforeseen circumstance, so we're, we're, you're missing my point. Mathematically, those unforeseen circum, excuse me, inflation, inflation may occur all on one line item, and not spread evenly across the?
That's probably not quite correct, because all of this is for materials and for labor.
We, we're going to disagree. My point is, I'm not going to accept a 35% release, line item by line item.
Well, you'll have to take that up with, with Mr. Fay, then, I disagree with you on that. It was 35% based on the inflation and for the fact that the costs related to the construction by the town, because they have to ascribe to prevailing wages and all that, it's bigger.
You're missing my point entirely, and, and I don't know how to resolve that in this discussion. I'm providing my input, the rest of the board can hear what I say, and they can make their decision.
It's, it's just not something I'm accustomed to, to dealing with that way, because you end up with the same amount of money at the end.
Respectfully, I, I think I can.
Okay.
If we, if we take some time on the side, I'll show you what I mean. I've done contracts my whole life.
I think it should be resolved by the board, not just between you and me, respectfully.
No, no, I was going to explain to you so that I, you would understand my point.
I, I see what your point is, but I don't agree with it, so the board needs to decide.
The rest of the board gets to decide. Thank you for your input.
Okay.
And, and I accept it, I understand exactly what you're saying, we're, we're going to disagree.
I have made substantial changes in the request. I don't know whether you want to go over with that tonight or not, but I'd be glad to go over it with you if you want.
I think we should do that, but we, we need to decide in action for, it's pretty clear, I don't think we're ready to release funds tonight, because we can't release the covenant, right?
No, it needs to be documented, it needs to be put in full writing and then signed by the board.
Okay, but why don't you go through your recommendations and?
All right. Okay, do, do you have copies of the itemized list? Do each of you have copies of it? All right.
I don't know, I don't know that the whole group does.
I don't know that I do.
I don't know that it was shared, but I know that I got a copy.
Okay.
You mean, Mr. Chairman, do you mean the letter that Charlie sent today?
No, no, the spreadsheet from Baypoint.
It's a spreadsheet, it, it was submitted, it was submitted to the planning office, I got a copy of it, and I've done my review based on that, if you'd like to see it.
Well, that's all right, I, I just need to see if you have a copy.
Okay, if you want to see it, yeah. The first, the first items in the list are all water items.
There is.
The first seven items in the list are all related to water services, water mains, and hydrants. Typically, it's either a representative of the Onset Water Department or Wareham Water Department, depending on which district you're in. They are responsible for the inspection and the overall construction of the water mains. Those first seven items have been requested for release, but my recommendation for those first, first seven items is, do not release it until you get a letter from the Onset Water District saying that they have inspected the water mains, that they have done the testing that's adequate to say the water is ready to use, because I don't have any authority over those water mains, it's the Onset Water District that does, and that's typically the way it happens. In any subdivision plan, I do not do the inspection of water, it's district representatives. So, that's more than $100,000 right there, that I'm saying, don't release it until you get the letter. I'm not saying that it's an improper amount, all I'm saying is, you need the verification from the water office. The next item was an Item 10, which was for PVC sewer services, those are the sewer connections that go from the buildings to the sewer main that's in Starboard Drive. They have 38 services, because there are 38 buildings that are a part of Starboard Drive. They haven't put in 38 yet, but they requested a release for all the money for 38 services. I've reduced that substantially. They're saying it's 75% complete, I've reduced it down to something over $2,200 for what services I have seen. Item 11 is a four-inch force main, I have not confirmed that that force main is in, it goes from the pump station up toward the end of the cul-de-sac where it would then go out to Onset Avenue. I've seen the gravity sewer mains there, but I have not verified the force main, and I know it hasn't been tested yet, nobody's given me information on that testing. The next item, which is 12, is the inch and a half force main, again, there has been an inch and a half force main installed, but it has not been confirmed as to the testing of it, so I'm not giving credit for all of that. Item 23 is catch basin framed and grates. The catch basins themselves are in the ground along with the connecting pipe, but you don't get a full release of the grates, the fact that they're just sitting there on the structure, they have not been raised to grade, they haven't been mortared in, they're not set to the finished grade, because the pavement hasn't put down. So, I'm not giving any credit for those catch basin frames and grates. I reduced it, I reduced the total amount to what's in my letter. The same for the drainage manholes, they call them frames and grates, they're actually frames and covers, they're solid covers, not grates. I've reduced that. The next item was a small infiltration basin, which is at the beginning of Starboard Drive, it's been dug out, but that's all. There's a pipe going into it, the riprap stone, everything isn't in place yet, or it wasn't the last time I was there, so I've reduced that down. There is a huge stockpile of gravel borrow, and they're requesting the gravel borrow to be, to be paid for, even though it hasn't been put in place on the road yet. I'm suggesting that it be withheld until such time as it's actually down on the road. The fact there's a stockpile there doesn't help anybody. So, the, for those items, I made some adjustments. For the other items which were a part of the request, I have approved those items in the amounts that are in the request. So, the recommended amount for security to be released is reduced from $341,312 to And then I put in my letter, it should be noted, the cost estimate lists Item 35, two-inch asphalt binder, as $90,000 is the base price, but it should be $98,000. This latter amount was approved by the planning board on April 11th of 2022. It should be corrected in the next submittal for the release of funding. Lastly, it's recommended that the amount of security be released for Phase Two be withheld until there is a recorded covenant release for Phase Two that stipulates that Phase Three is still under the initial covenant. This latter phase is for the construction of Beacon Street. It should also reference the relocation of the sewer line in Onset Avenue, which has not been done. The security for Phase Two does not include the cost of the relocation of the sewer line that is proposed in Onset Avenue.
Okay, that's, this is one set?
One set.
That's one set. Send that down, here's a second set.
And my last recommendation was that no occupancy permit for any building in Phase Two or Three be issued until this work is complete to the satisfaction of the sewer department and municipal maintenance. And then I gave you the reference for the covenant and where the definitive plan is recorded. And then I gave you the reference for the covenant and where the definitive plan is recorded.
Thank you. We're at the point where we need to take some actions. This is not a public hearing, but are there, is there anyone who has a question? Okay. Ayers, Mr. Sussa. I'll, I'll take a couple of questions. It's not a public hearing.
My name is Ayers Sussa, I live on.
You need to come to the microphone.
Ayers Sussa, I live on 39 Baypoint Drive, that's.
That's, that's phase one, okay? And my question is, I mean, I hear all this stuff about phase two and three. Do we still have a bond on phase one?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay. So none of that has been released thus far?
Some of it may have been released. I, I, I can't answer that, but not all of it.
Some of it was released, yes.
Some has been released?
Yes.
Because we still have issues with sidewalks, streetlights, and infrastructure that hasn't been brought up to grade. So we're very concerned that nothing gets released on phase one until these issues get resolved.
Which, which was the reason I raised the question.
I appreciate that, yeah.
To try and clarify that. So we're, we're not discussing any release of funds.
Nothing whatsoever.
From phase one tonight.
Okay, and how do we proceed to get the board's attention that these conditions still exist?
Oh, we're, I, I think you've made it painfully aware. No, I'm sorry, not painfully, but, but we're, we're aware of your pain. Let's say it that way.
Yeah, okay.
And I think every time these issues come up, we, we probe to make sure that we're not missing those things. Now, that doesn't mean that we're gonna be able to resolve it to your satisfaction. Some of this, some of this may be between you and the, and the developer directly.
Right, because Windward Pines on record is really 80-some to 90-some units, of which 28 are phase one, and then the remaining 56 apply to phase two and three.
Correct.
And that, that's our concern, because even though we're addressing it in segments, this is still one, one condominium trust, one piece of property under one deed right now.
Right.
So we're very concerned.
Right, so, right now, that's why I, I tried to point out that we have multiple accounts. I'm, I'm gonna use that word, to, to cover various aspects of the project. And we're not talking about the work that was done, or remains to be done.
That's what we wanted to make clear, that's why we came. We're not interfering with phase two or three. It's just, so what was, what would be our next step to bring this to your attention? Do we request a meeting? How do we get our issues resolved with the board? I mean.
I, I, okay.
Because they continue to exist.
I don't know the answer to that question. I, I mean, we're aware of your issues. We're, we're, those issues, and I'll look to either Charlie or Kent to nod, need to be taken up with the developer.
If I might, Mr. Chairman. First thing to do is to separate those issues that are strictly between the developer and the lot owners, as opposed to that portion of the construction which deals with Baypoint Drive. Because that's the only thing that the covenant covers, is the construction of Baypoint Drive and the amenities within it, including the bounding of the streets, as well as the bounding of the perimeter of the so-called lots that are there.
And some streetlight issues and some sidewalk.
If the streetlights were a portion, were a part of the definitive plan and they showed on the plan as being part of the construction, then yes, that would be part of it. But you first need to separate out whatever issues that are not a part of that original covenant and a part of the definitive plan, not the site plan as it encompasses all of the buildings, but just the street construction. Because that's the only thing the covenant or the, or the, the bonding covers, is that. Once you do that, and you know which items are left, as far as the road construction is concerned, Windward Pine still has some time, I think, to finish that off. I mean, I don't know that they're under a specific timeline, unless Ken, you know they are, I don't believe so.
No, they're not.
Because once the, once the construction's begun, they just finish it. What they can't get is a release of the funding under that security until every item that's covered by the security has been signed off and inspected. So.
So I, I don't, the answer to the question, how to do that separation of what's covered and what's not, I think we've attempted to do that in several meetings. Issues related inside the condominiums, the heating issue, those things are, are beyond our purview. I believe the last, beyond the sidewalks, the streetlights, which we need to confirm, that I believe are covered, but that's my belief.
They are in there, yeah.
Yeah. The only other item is a landscaping issue that the, the association fixed, because the developer didn't fix it. And we haven't, we haven't reviewed that or ruled on whether that is in or out of scope. I, I don't know the answer to that sitting here. But there's a land, a $12,000 landscaping issue that Mr. Salem regularly brings up.
That's with the village, right. There was property that was destroyed or had to be removed or whatever for the construction of phase one. And from what he says, that was supposed to be repaired or replaced back to its original state, and that hasn't happened. So that's Mr. Salem's concern. Ours is, we have, they did the streets. The streets are in the finished state right now. But when they did the driveways in the finished state, they ran over the sidewalks. And now the sidewalks have lips. You trip on them when you're walking. They don't have a finished coat. And the other thing is, all our, our infrastructure shut offs. Like, I don't, I can't find my sewer cleanout, that's buried somewhere. My, my water shut off is not visible. You know, those are the issues we're concerned about regarding the bond.
I, I think perhaps the first step might be to clearly produce a single itemized list of your issues that we could then review and, and provide some feedback on? Or, I don't know if the, if the driveway lip would be covered or not.
The driveway will be covered up to the street line, and then after that, it's a part of the site work.
That's, that's, well, it would be covered up to the sidewalk line, right?
Well, whatever, where the sidewalk is, the sidewalk is within the layout of the street.
Yeah.
So that would be covered as a part of the security. So if there's any issues with that, that would be addressed through the bond that's covered. And they would have to correct that. I don't recall that we've actually, they have not asked for a release of the wearing surface on Baypoint Drive yet. The only thing that was released was the binder.
Right.
The wearing surface release, and I don't think the sidewalk has been requested for release.
And they haven't completed the re, rebuilding of Baypoint Drive all the way down to Onset anyway.
No, but that's not a part of phase one anymore.
That's part of phase.
Two and three, to the best of my knowledge.
Or four, we talked about it on four as well, but I don't remember what it, where it ended up.
I'd have to research that, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, so, the only thing I could say is, is item.
On a list, yeah.
Yeah, and then, well, we're, be, be assured, we're aware of your concerns, and we're trying to work our way through.
Yeah, like, we're concerned, because we have some people who, who move about with a walker. And that lip is, is, can cause a big problem when they hit it. Okay, that's number one. Number two is, we've been here three and a half years. When do we bring this to a conclusion, that we have our street light, when we have all our shut offs, so we can move on? It's like, if, if there's a water problem in my house, you cannot shut the water off from outside. My shut offs are not above grade. And I'm not the only one. The sewer cleanouts are hidden.
I'm not sure if that's covered or not.
Somebody's gotta bring this all up to grade for us. The water shut offs, that would be something you'd have to address with the onset water department as to how that gets done. I'll call them, I can call them tomorrow.
Yeah. All right, but, but, we, we don't have good answers, I understand. But, but until the developer comes and says, we're done, I don't think we're gonna resolve all these issues.
But, but I, you don't expect us to wait until phase two and three are done? I mean, because.
It, it could be three, four, five more years. I can't, I can't answer that.
Okay, I guess the critical thing is the shut offs going into the houses, because in case there's an emergency. And now, does each house have a gas shut off as well? I see them in some houses.
I, I, I don't know. I think that again is beyond the purview of, of the subdivision plan and the, I think, I think, I don't know, Ken, what do you think? I, I know Charlie's given us advice. I don't think those are things where, where we can.
Those are, those are building code issues and aren't usually addressed by the planning board into the.
Right, right, so the zoning enforcement officer, that would, right.
The, the building code official.
Yeah. Well, he's the same guy.
And the fire department and the.
Water department.
Water department. Would be looking at those.
Sewer department.
Yeah.
But when they got a, a, kind of occupancy, one would think those issues would have been noted or.
One would think.
I would have assumed that when the connection was made, that an inspection was done by the water department and they okayed the location of the shut off.
It's quite possible that the final grading hadn't been done and that's how it got buried.
It's possible, yeah. That would have been very logical, it could have happened that way.
Okay, so, the one thing I can assure you is, we're not releasing any funds for phase one tonight. The next thing I can do is send, you could send us a list, and, and we'll continue to keep that in the forefront of our mind. The next thing I can assure you is, the board is very aware of the concerns of the residents. And we recognize that we represent the town, the residents, and, and the developers to try and make sure that we get good projects done in town. And then the final thing is, I think you've got some advice to contact the fireman, the fire department, the water department, the sewer department, and ask some of those questions.
I will address that beginning tomorrow.
Yes. And please keep us informed as.
I'll list up for you, of what we see. And we're not talking inside the house or landscaping. These are just infrastructure items we consider critical to our house.
Yes, but, but again, the, the, the scope of the subdivision plan is pretty much limited to the street. And.
Okay.
That's, that's our purview in this, and things in the special permit that we, we called out.
Okay, I appreciate the time. Thank you, Mr.
No, no, please, please, we wanna make sure you, you understand the process.
Right. The street light is critical, it's a danger to the corner. And other than that, there's no lights anywhere, the sidewalk. Are we gonna wait 10 years for the sidewalk? That's another thing. You know, because we have a subdivision where they expanded the road. We have a sidewalk, then it goes back to a 19-foot, a 20-foot road.
Yep.
With no sidewalk and no lights. So it's like, we're caught in the middle of a, of, of a no man's land. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your, thank you. And please, please feel free to come and we'll, we'll try and.
Oh, thank you.
I'm Steve Costa, 35, Baypoint Drive, phase one. Just a clarification, you talked about for phase two, a relocation of the sewer line to Onset Avenue is part of what's going on there. Yet I remember going through meetings here last spring with Mr. Fay saying they're gonna, they were going to connect the new sewer pumps that are being built for, and go out under the golf course onto the force main that already goes out to Onset Avenue. So, is something needed on Onset Avenue to do that? Or are they going a different way? That's all I'm asking.
No, there's something in addition to what you've just described that they are required to do by the sewer department. Because the line that they're connecting to needs to be redirected down Onset Avenue. So the effluent is taken away from the beach. Right now, it goes, goes down toward Point Independence Yard Club and that area.
Right, I.
They wanna change that so that it goes down Onset Avenue and goes directly to the sewer pump station that's at Southwater.
Down at the bridge, right.
So there's work within Onset Avenue that is not covered. It's not what you described, though.
Okay, okay. That's just a clarification, it seemed different than what I knew before.
Thank you, yeah, it's very complicated.
And thanks for the clarification of phase one and, you know, where we stand, et cetera. You know, we're all trying to work through this.
Yep.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. John, is there anybody in the web who has a question? Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna close the debate and we can now discuss some kind of motion. Yes, so I, okay, some, some things, some action. Charlie, if you could draft your covenant and send it to Ken's office.
I'll clean this up. Are you gonna take a vote as a, as a board to actually, everybody signs it, or?
Not tonight, I don't.
I, I know that, but when you sign it, you're gonna sign it as a board?
Yes, we, I don't think we should do one person signing it, like I think happened in one case, yes. Yes, so the first motion then I would accept is that a request to Mr. Rowley revise the release of covenant document and send it to Mr. Buckland's office for consideration at our next meeting. Looking for a second.
A second.
Ms. Quirk?
Am I permitted to vote on this?
Oh, probably not tonight, okay. You could go like this. Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And Mr. Schultz votes aye. So then I'll look for a motion. I guess that sort of effectively tables it. I think we should.
You can take no action at this point for the rest of it and wait for the next time?
Yes, I think we should.
But I think you should ask for Mr. Fay or representative to show up to the next meeting.
Yes, yes, I think so.
Do you wanna take this up on 26?
Do we wanna do the 20, 26 is, is really packed. We got Fearing Hill, we've got.
Zero, zero twenty-five.
Zero twenty-five, which are two solar projects. We have Doty Street. Is there anything else coming? There's some more.
Six, and the next meeting is the 10th.
Fearing Hill, zero twenty-five. All right, so I think that's plenty busy. How about the meeting after that? Which would be.
October 10th.
October 10th.
It won't be the 10th, because that's Columbus Day. We'll have to talk about, we have a meeting in October, because.
Then there's town meeting.
We're gonna have to have the 11th, Tuesday, the 11th after Columbus Day, or the 3rd, October 3rd, the week before as alternate.
So could we decide that now?
You can decide that now if you want, if you wanna schedule the time that you.
Because we need, we're gonna need to meet a bunch of times before town meeting, right?
Yeah, you probably have to.
I don't think we could afford not to have a meeting that week. Now the.
When's town meeting?
Town meeting's the 24th of October.
Yeah.
That would be awful.
What about?
To submit, I think, is next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you have to hold, whatever is submitted, you have to hold a public hearing on.
So, yeah, even if some things are submitted, we, we still have time. We need, we're gonna need to have some public hearings. Where are you at with the lit program?
I haven't heard anything on the lit program. I don't know if that one's been, is gonna be filed or not.
Okay.
But we have two that were filed by, requested by one of the selectmen. And we have the MS4 bylaw. And we have, we'll have 1381 as well, too.
So, it's either we meet before the 10th, or?
It's, uh, October 3rd, the Monday, the first Monday.
Yeah, which I'm not necessarily gonna be here.
Tuesday, October the 11th, or Monday, October 17th.
The 11th is also a ZBA meeting and a select meeting?
ZBA meets on Wednesdays.
On Wednesdays, okay.
Ken, when's the last day we can submit?
You can submit, the 20th is the last day you can submit.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this, this particular item doesn't need to be submitted to town meeting, so we could. Yes, but there, there's gonna be more public hearings, which we can have after they've been submitted.
And we need 14 days before we hold the hearing to have the public notice. So that puts us out, and squeezes us on time.
All right, so, we, we need to make a decision on when. All right, so we need to make a decision on when we want to continue, table this and continue. We've agreed that the 26th looks pretty busy. Sure, the applicant wouldn't be happy to wait until after town meeting, although that's an option.
So it sounds like the question is maybe whether we have a meeting on the 3rd of October.
And I may not be here for that. My son's birthday is the 2nd. My granddaughter's birthday is the 2nd.
Family business to attend to.
Burning out of days.
Yeah. What do you think, Ken?
I think there's a possibility that you may not have all these items on the 26th either because they're dependent on the Conservation Commission making a decision. And I can't be sure that they're going to make a decision in this timeframe.
On which?
On Doty Street and Zero Route 25.
But we're waiting for the variance on Zero.
Variance, that's right. So that one's going to be, that one's going to be simpler.
Yeah, so we wouldn't be able to close the public hearing those nights.
Fearing Hill may not be, they may not have a finding from Conservation by that time.
We won't, but we haven't got the revised plans on Fearing Hill yet either.
So I don't expect much of a discussion on the 26th and if it's going to be continued beyond that.
Although Neil Price is coming to answer Mr. Baptiste's questions about sediment control, I believe, right?
That's right. And one of the thoughts was having the Conservation Commission invited in as well, too, for a joint meeting.
That I've tried to resolve and has turned into a major fiasco. I'm sorry. I tried to resolve it. I can't, I can't. Sandy says if you don't send me a formal letter, I'm not coming. So we need to resolve that offline.
All right.
I tried to resolve it for the last week with Mike and Sandy.
What you're saying is the 26th, we'll have a discussion on Fearing Hill regardless.
But I don't believe that, at this point, it's not going to be a joint meeting between Conservation Commission and, because...
And we could invite one of them in anyway.
I think Dave is coming. I believe that's been agreed to. I know we're getting all over the place here. I want to bring it back in. We have to pick a date to continue this. And let's discuss, while we, they're all tied together here. When do you want to continue this item?
If we're going to lose the 10th and the 24th in October, the 10th to a holiday and the 24th to town meeting, perhaps we ought to plan on a meeting on the 3rd.
Okay.
Perhaps even the 17th.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to reschedule the October. Before we finish on tabling this item, I'll entertain a motion to reschedule the, or not. Is it reschedule or schedule additional? It's probably reschedule. So reschedule the two October meetings to the 3rd and the 17th.
In lieu of the 10th and the 24th.
In lieu of the 10th and the 24th. As a first, first action to getting our business organized. So...
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Sure, I think you can vote on scheduling meetings.
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, Ken...
That's good. So we have two meetings in October then.
Yeah. Have we, we haven't announced any public hearings for the 10th or the 24th. So, but we're coming close to needing, if we're going to schedule any public hearings on the 3rd, we're coming close.
Right. You have to advertise by this Thursday.
Okay. So now that we've got our schedule for October sort of stabilized, I'm looking for a recommendation or a vote when we table the discussion of Baypoint Club, too.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest the second meeting as opposed to the 3rd, which is when you will not be here.
I'm going to do everything to be here now.
Okay.
But, okay, so let's move Baypoint, table Baypoint until the 17th. Is that okay with everyone? Okay. So that takes care of item one on the...
Do we need to vote on moving it to the 17th?
Okay, let's just take a vote on moving it to the 17th. Motion to...
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, so, and Charlie will get his form. Gives you a little more time. Mr. Buckland will let Mr. Fay know it would be really helpful if the applicant were here when we were discussing this. Okay. All right. That was supposed to be a quick item.
I know.
All right, no, no. We're going to be here. That's okay. Sam?
Thanks.
Sam? You're welcome, Sam.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I, Ken, do I read the notice of public hearing before opening the public hearing?
Yes, you do.
Okay, so I'm going to read. The next item on the agenda is Project 1922 Dos Amigos Realty LLC, definitive subdivision off Squirrel Island Road, map 74, lots 110A2 and 110A3. Before opening the public meeting, I'll read the announcement. Notice of public hearing, which has appeared and have been properly posted. The Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on September 12, 2020, at 6:00 PM in Room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts 02571, to consider petition 1922 for a definitive subdivision plan of patent estates under the requirements of MGL Chapter 41, Section 81L to Dos Amigos Realty LLC, care of J.C. Engineering of 2854 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Massachusetts, proposing a two-lot subdivision, total acreage of tract approximately 3.76 acres, located at Off Squirrel Island Road, map 74, lots 110A2 and 110A3 in the R60 zoning district. Michael King, chairman. First notice, August 18, 2022. Second notice, August 25, 2022. Before we, any questions before we open the public hearing? I'm looking for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Starting with Mr. Baptiste?
I'm looking at the map 74.
Well, we have to open the public hearing first. That's what I'm looking for, a second. Vote on opening the public hearing. Jane?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So the public hearing is now open. You're speaking for the applicant. Do we want to hear from the applicant first before your questions? Or, okay, so speaking for the applicant, we have...
Good evening. Brad Rotola with J.C. Engineering on behalf of Dos Amigos Realty LLC. This project involves the construction of a roadway to create two lots. The property is located at map 74 lot 1010D. Consists of just under four acres. It's a portion of property that is situated on the, I guess, the rare of a few lots that were recently created, either earlier this year or last year, under Form A approval and subsequently built. What we're proposing tonight is to create a, I'll construct a roadway to service two lots. It'll consist of a 510-foot-long paved roadway, 12 feet in width, with turnaround at the end. The pavement itself will be super elevated so that runoff from the roadway is directed into a grassed swale that runs the full length of the roadway, which would be, I guess, on the north side of the roadway and drain into a detention basin, grassed detention basin. There is a hammerhead turnaround at the end where we have shown that a fire truck can adequately access the roadway and turn around and make its way out within the pavement's surface. This is basically a common driveway for two lots. So as part of this subdivision, we are looking for a number of waivers that were listed on the front page. I'll just quickly go through them. We're looking for a waiver from installing streetlights, a waiver from installing street trees, a waiver from installing sidewalks, a waiver from installing concrete berms on both sides of the roadway. We are proposing a Cape Cod berm along one side. We're requesting a waiver from fire alarms. We're requesting a waiver from installing an eight-foot-wide paved roadway and reduce that down to a 12-foot-wide roadway. We're requesting a waiver from the construction of a cul-de-sac at the end of the dead-end roadway. We are providing a turnaround hammerhead that's been utilized and approved in the past by the fire department. I'm assuming that the fire department has reviewed these plans or they're in the process because I haven't seen any comment letters from them. And the last waiver is a request from installing town water as this, the subdivision is approximately 1,100 feet from the nearest water. The houses themselves would be, you know, close to over 1,500 feet from actual town water. Again, we're providing a 12-foot-wide paved surface. The actual pavement width would actually be 13 feet. That accounts for the Cape Cod berm on one side. That would be the high side of the roadway. The low side would be pitched into a grassed swale and that would lead to a detention basin that's at the base of the hill. The plans include all the details necessary for the construction of the roadway, obviously pending review from this board and Mr. Rowley. It basically describes the project. It's 510 feet long. It's within the maximum length of 1,000 feet for dead-end roadways under the subdivision rules and regulations. The lots themselves have adequate frontage on the proposed roadway, adequate upland area, adequate shape factor. So they meet zoning requirements. Be considered buildable lots. The board has any questions on the project? Be more than happy to answer them.
Starting on my left, Ms. Quirk?
I have no questions at this point.
Mr. Baptiste?
No questions at this time.
Okay, Ms. Gleason?
With the project being new to us, I have no questions at this point.
Mr. Corbett?
At this time.
Okay. Just, did you want to make a statement?
I had a couple of questions.
Okay, great, go for it.
On the 12-foot proposed roadway with, typically the planning board has gone to a minimum of 18 feet. Is there a location where the planning board has set a precedent of going less than 18?
We just did one on Crooked River Road for a one lot, I believe. That was approved within the last couple of months. Similar situation, hammerhead turnaround at the end, but I don't have the specifics on that. I don't recall it was that, that wide.
And the detention basin in the right-of-way, it takes up frontage that would be used for access to the individual lots. Is that, is there a precedent for the detention basin in the turnaround?
Well, the access, it does have access. It's not limited. I mean, preventing access. There is space. There is space beside the drainage easement that would provide access for a driveway.
That's all.
Mr. Rowley?
I'm sorry, I don't have a report for you because I don't have plans.
Okay, great. The chair, oh, okay, you can have a set of plans. The chair has at least one question. You said you're not, you're looking for a waiver to connect to city water or town water, right?
Yes.
Does that mean also connecting to town sewer? Is that what that means as well?
Town sewer is not available in this location of town.
Okay, so.
And it's not even...
Because my question was going to be about the moratorium, so, okay. All right. Mr. Buckland, have we gotten comments from any of the other boards or departments as of yet on this plan?
No, we haven't.
Okay. So we don't have Mr. Rowley's report. We don't have comments from any of the boards. This is our initial meeting. Well, it's a public hearing and I believe Mr. Lintala will probably have some questions. So is there anyone from the public who has a question? Or more than one question?
Well, Mr. Lintala is coming up to the microphone. I can point out that there wasn't, there was not a preliminary subdivision on this one, so there's extra time in the review that's available to the board.
Oh, this is a definitive, yes.
That's right, this is definitive.
Please state your name and address.
Eric Lintala, 15 Squirrel Island Road. Where to begin?
So just a question. Where is your house geographically located?
I'm down the road a little bit. I'm not in a direct butter, but when I do the next house, I will be. I'm sort of representing several people on the road for tonight, the beginning of this.
So this isn't behind your house?
No, no. There's, it's sort of a long story, but to make it short, I'm here tonight because we want to head the problem off at the pass. We haven't had that opportunity over the years until now. Because once the properties that we've bought on this road that have been built and we've, we bought them, signed off, well, the problem sort of that exists became ours. That's another story. But the problem starts right here, the construction of this. It's not an issue with, at the moment, everything I've seen so far. But there's a responsibility. We're basically talking about disclosure. If you're selling property, there's a disclosure form. You fill it out what problems exist on the properties. There's a major problem that exists on all of these properties that have been built. And it happens, it deals with utilities, the electric, the poles, the electric lines. Nobody was ever informed of the problem. They're privately owned, the poles, and the road is privately owned. And it's been a pain in our butts for several years of been trying to resolve several issues. At the moment, since we've signed off, basically they say, well, maybe it's, you should get a lawyer on this issue. But you people are going to sign off on this project. And if you sign off of it when you're not going to know the problem, then it's going to go on. And they're going to sell the house and the people, and whoever sells the house, the realtor, they need to disclose this problem. Once N-Star left and EverSource took over, EverSource has refused to deal with our lines whenever they come down, any storms or anything, because they're privately owned, the poles, by one person on Squirrel Island Road. And this person has refused to turn the poles over. But a year and a half ago, J.C. Engineering, two houses were built recently over there. They were being built. We raised the problem up with them about the tying in, the problem with the poles. They will not service the poles. Wires come down, it's our problem. The owners of these houses before they're sold should know that. So, but in good faith, when they were building the last couple of houses out there, they came up with a plan and worked that out with the owner of the poles, Mr. Perry, providing, they had it all planned out, EverSource. Letters were sent to all the residents, all of us.[1789.92] they had it all planned out, Eversource, letters were sent to all the residents, all of us, deeds had to be turned in, et cetera, that we would basically take over the poles and we would turn them over to them for a fee. Well, we don't own the poles, the residents, Mr. Perry does. We weren't going to pay for the turnover. Nonetheless, so the problem exists, they're going to build a house, and the people are going to inherit this problem. They need to know the problem before they buy the house. They should resolve the problem before they build the houses. It makes, we're talking about protecting the residents of Wareham, safety, et cetera. When those wires come down, what we've had to endure over the years has been a real pain in our butts. We've had to call in our own private company for one winter. Luckily, last winter, last fall, wires came down, fire department came, it was so dangerous, Eversource did take care of the wires. But they refuse, on the other hand, every time there's issues when we call, they refuse. So the problem now exists right here. They're going to build the houses now, and that problem's going to be turned over to who buys them. So who takes care of this problem? Now, you know, I'm heading it off at the pass right now. Everybody's been, we've been dealing with this for years now, and it doesn't seem right that they're going to build houses and all of a sudden this major problem's going to be turned over. And it hasn't been resolved, and I don't know, I don't see it being resolved anytime soon, because the residents don't own those poles. He's responsible. Who is he responsible to to make sure that's taken care of? He's supposed to do it according to the, to Eversource. They throw it back to add his, into his ball court. But you're going to okay a project with a major flaw in it, and the people who bought the last couple of houses, they didn't know about it. None of us knew about it, and they're pretty upset. We've been upset a long time because we've had to deal with the problems over the years. So at the least, there should be a disclosure. There's a right-of-way, and it's on the, it's on the form there, that there's a right-of-way the residents have because it's a private road. Well, these are private poles, should not be in the document, and that there's a problem that there's no ownership of the poles. We cannot guarantee that you're, you know, during storms, et cetera, you're, you know, you're going to be taken care of. You will be, or in other words, you will be responsible. You buy the house, you are responsible for those wires. That's the big problem. So if you sign off on this, you're going to pass that problem on. So I don't know, I don't know what else, how we would do it, but at least there should be a disclosure to anybody who buys those properties. It should be in the document someplace that there is an issue, and that's disclosure.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question to Mr. Rowley. This is the first time in my experience where we've discussed a subdivision plan where they couldn't hook into public utilities. What, how does subdivision law apply where we can't guarantee that they can hook into public utilities? Electric?
Well, I was just looking at the rules and regulations. It says that you have to show in the plan the utilities that are going to be provided. So I would think it's up to the applicant to show that he is able to provide the electric utilities to the subdivision regardless of where they come from.
So he would need to have agreements in place?
He would either have to show that he's going to come from the closest public utility, which would be, I assume, out in Fearing Hill Road, or show an agreement with the owner of the lines that they have a right to tie into it.
So that's feedback to you that we're going to want to resolve that, that issue? Any other comments or questions from, this is, I'm really concerned about this plan now. Thank you, Ms. Lintala.
Just to add what Charlie is saying, it goes without saying that if, if an agreement like that is reached, it will have obligations in it to address such things as lines going down.
Maintenance, maintenance and.
Yeah, exactly. And with that kind of agreement, hopefully, these other problems can, can be resolved. But that seems like it would be necessary to going forward with this.
Mr. Baptiste?
Who's going to bear the burden of the load, the existing problem to the last two houses or? Who's going to bear the burden of the load, the last two houses being built?
I don't.
This place has just built pretty well, built out now, and every time they come, it's creative engineering to the max.
Yeah, and I would think that the agreement would be extended to all of the houses that take service off of these lines, because otherwise, all the costs aren't accounted for in the way that they need to be.
Ms. Gleason?
I think they got the gist of what I would ask. Thank you.
From me to the applicant, are you aware of any other unusual issues, given that this is a private road and private utilities and that we should, as a board, make sure that we adequately cover? Were you even aware of this issue?
Me, no, not aware of it. I know that the client will be responsible for installing the mains of the electric utilities in this subdivision, and the design of the electric utilities is not on us, is on the electric company. And whatever has to be provided to provide power to these, this subdivision and any upgrades to make sure there's adequate power, it's always been the electric company that does that. We have no say over anything. They give us their plan.
But you will be presenting their plan to us?
That's not done until there's an approved project. It's never.
You may not get the actual location of utility poles and so forth, or in fact, they have to be underground, but that doesn't absolve the planning board of requiring that they show that they have the actual connections. Now, whether those connections, as I said, were out at Fearing Hill Road to these two lots, or whether they negotiate some sort of an agreement, those two things are certainly within your authority to demand as a part of the approval.
Yeah.
So it doesn't matter whether the owner is going to do it or not, it's up to them to prove that they have the source of, a source of electricity, period. And you approve it once you see what it is.
Okay, so that's, that's feedback to you. Mr. Perry isn't the owner of these lots, is he?
Not, no, he's not the owner of the current lots.
No, no, I just made it so he's not going to be making an agreement with himself on this.
Oh, no, no.
Yes, I think you should take this concern back to the applicant and.
I'm sure there won't be any issues.
Oh, great. We just want to make sure that it's clearly, Mr. Lintala.
They're well aware, J.C. Engineering is well aware of the problem because they helped try to resolve it a year and a half ago.
Yes.
But, I mean, these two new houses being proposed, there'll be another one coming up that will be Mr. Perry's on Squirrel Island Road. That would be the last house built in this area, and this, it's going to come up again, and he's.
It won't come before the planning board, though, so.
No, but so interestingly then, you know, I understand, I knew this, as soon as they hook up to the poles, they wash their hands of that. But where's the guarantee that those poles, that the wires in it will be maintained for these people? That falls on Mr. Perry. They need to deal with Mr. Perry to guarantee that, then, do they not?
Well, they need.
Something.
Okay, thank you, yes. They need to provide, as part of their plan, how they're going to provide utilities to the subdivision, and whatever form that might take, we'll have to review it when you bring it forward. We'll attempt to address this issue. That seems the best we can do right now, right?
I would think so.
Do you have any questions about what we're asking?
No, I'm just, I'm here to receive any comments, and I know we're waiting for fire department or any other town. And obviously, I figured your consultant would have a set of plans, but.
Do you have a 53G account set up? So we need to get a 53G account set up from Mr. Rowley to review.
Right.
Any other administrative work to move this project forward before we continue?
No, now that I have the plans, do you have drainage calculations, Brad?
They were attached to the.
Yeah, they're submitted with the plans.
Do you have a set?
Yeah, they should be set in the, in the folder.
If there's a set there, I'll need those.
What are you looking for?
Drainage calculations.
Well, you got whatever I, a copy of whatever we have.
The only thing I have is the plan.
There's nothing else then that was in the folder? What's that?
Is it, it's a.
Well, I didn't get a copy of that, so those didn't get passed down. All I got was.
Anything in the box?
Yeah, we need copies of that.
I think the drains, drainage cocks are attached to that, what Sam has in his hand.
I have a cop, I have a copy.
I have all I need to get the estimate together now.
Okay, great. The rest of us didn't get a copy of that, so. And if we could get these posted, some of this material is posted on the website. I don't know if the storm.
Everything's posted, I verified.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything's been posted.
I did look at the website. All right, so I would, it's a discussion when we want to continue this, too, now that we're doing calendar management. The 3rd, 17th?
To give Charlie enough time, I think the 3rd would be the earliest.
Yeah, the 26th, I think we're, right now, we're trying to stay away from, we still don't know what's going to come up. It could be a light evening or it could be chaos. All right, so motion to, did you have a word?
I, I do have a word, which is that it sounds to me as if the owner of the lines is performing a public utility responsibility. I'm not sure, I would like to look at what the law states on this and whether there is some adjustment in his position that needs to be taken.
Can you take that action?
I will take that up, yeah.
And report to the board?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Mr. Lintala, have you guys done any legal action? Do you have any legal input on this issue?
Not legal, what we did, and a year and a half ago. We've been trying to resolve it without getting into the legal aspect at this point. It's because of finances mainly, but we, you know, we, we came close, working with J.C. Engineering a year and a half ago, with the, the street plan, the new poles, everything was designed, Eversource was involved, everybody was on board, there were forms sent to everybody. In the end, it came down to then, the poles would be turned over to the residents, and residents were not paying for the turnover then, and Mr. Perry would have nothing to do, would walk away then. These are his poles, and he's, you know, these are his poles.
All right, thank you. So we have, we have some work to do, and hopefully, your firm has some information they could provide you some more background so that we can, we can have a meaningful dialogue. So we need to continue, Ms. Quirk is going to do some legal research.
Yeah.
When do we want to continue it to? The 3rd or the 17th? Thoughts? Ken, recommendation?
October 3rd.
Any, any concerns with the 3rd? Okay, I'm looking for a motion then.
So moved.
Say, we have a motion to continue the public hearing on 1922 Dos Amigos till October 3rd. I'm looking for a second. Having a second, I'm looking for a vote.
Aye.
Ms. Quirk, aye. Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And Mr. Schultz votes aye. This public hearing will be continued until October 3rd.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, it's only 7:25, it's early. Ken, I don't have the, the language of the announcement on the amendment to Article 13. Do you?
Well, that's all right, because I found an error in the, in the public announcement on this one, that you can't hold the hearing tonight on this one.
Okay, so we'll, we'll table the discussion of amendment to Article 13 until the planning office advises us that it's been properly noticed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, hey, we're knocking them off.
Someday, we're going to have a reckoning on these.
Yes. The last item on the, well, no, it's not the last item. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing on amendment to Article 6, density and dimensional zoning bylaws.
You have to vote on the continued public hearings on the other ones as well.
Oh, we actually have to vote on, yes.
Yeah, you have to vote on them.
Yes. I'm looking for a motion to continue the public hearing on 12/22 Wareham MA 3 LLC Site Plan Review 91 and 101 Fearing Hill Road, MAP 91 and 71, lots 100 and, excuse me, 1,000 and 1,007 until September 26th.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'm looking for a motion to continue 33/21 Wareham PV1 LLC Site Plan Review 0 Route 25, MAP 115, Lot 1,000, Ground Mountain Solar Energy Generation Facility until the 26th.
So moved.
Second, second. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Schultz votes aye. Finally, I'm looking for a motion to continue 3/22 Jason St. Martin Site Plan Review 5 Dodie Street, MAP 103, Lot 1027, a parking lot, until the 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now, moving on to the continued public hearing for the amendment to Article 6. This is Ms. Gleason's baby. Are you going to lead the discussion?
To the best of my knowledge, the revisions have been made as requested, and no further revisions have been made since our last discussion.
That's correct. There is a couple of changes that I think have to be made as well, too. There's a spelling error in the beginning. But I think it's ready to go, and I think what you should do now is decide on your recommendation to town meeting.
Okay, well, before we close up public hearing, it's just, any board comment, Ms. Quirk?
No, I think everything's in really good shape.
Mr. Baptiste?
I'm happy.
Mr. Corbett?
Ken, is nothing substantial that's changed, just spelling, punctuation?
Yeah, essentially so.
I'm good.
Okay, just a question, because I missed, have you done any further follow, I know the zoning board came forward and had some ideas and thoughts. Where are we at with the discussion with them?
We had a discussion on that, and changes were made to accommodate their, where we ended up in that conversation.
And is your sense they're sort of satisfied with the progress we've made, even though it may not be, it may not be complete, but?
No.
The progress was made.
No, and I, I think we made our point clear to, to the members of the ZBA who came to our meeting, that we do have an intent to look at the substantive content of that article at a later date.
Right.
But at this time, it's really about cleaning it up so that it is legible and it was formatting and spelling and getting rid of duplications of information and.
Great. And if I remember correctly, this change we're making to Article 13 was also addressing one of their concerns, right?
Article 13 was indeed one of their concerns, but I think we've, it's on here separately, so that was, Article 13 was.
Right, yeah, no, we, we're not ready to discuss, but I just said, we're hearing them, we're listening to them, we're taking their input.
Yes, absolutely.
Great. Anyone in the public who wishes to comment on Article 6? All right. So back to Mr. Buckland, should we close the public hearing and then make a motion, then make a motion on our position to the?
Yeah, I think so. I think it'd be a reasonable thing to do.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing on amendment to Article 6, density and dimensional zoning bylaw.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So the public hearing on this article is closed. Mr. Buckland, do you have a recommendation on our motion to the town council?
I think you vote to recommend the bylaw, the passage of the bylaw to town meeting. It'll be a two-thirds vote, but I think you can recommend it strongly.
All right, before, as part of our recommendation or subsidy, we'll have to write a explanation and defense.
Yes, exactly.
That's not due today or?
No, it's not.
Is it due before we submit to the 19th? Do we have to have that text before the 19th?
We'll have text before, whenever it's necessary.
Okay, great, great, thank you. All right, so I'm looking for a motion.
To recommend a town meeting.
Well, do we have to take a, well, so I'm looking for a recommendation, I'm looking for a motion for a favorable recommendation. for a motion for a favorable recommendation on Article 6 to, to the Board of Selectment for town meeting, so...
And to the, and to town meeting, you're reporting directly to town meeting.
Oh, okay, and to town meeting, okay. So...
So moved.
So then, our count, our vote of yes, would be our report to the town meeting, or our votes of no, so whatever.
That's right.
So a yes vote on your part is a favorable recommendation to town meeting, and a no vote would be that you don't support the article to town meeting. So we have a motion, and a second? Second?
Second.
Okay, can Ms. Quirk, she can vote on this, right?
I suppose so, but...
Well, we have to have a count.
She's a town meeting member as well, too, so she can vote anyway.
Yeah, but no, we need a count for what we tell town meeting what the count is, so what's, would she be included in the count, then?
I would add her in now, and if we have to take her out later, we will.
Great, okay, Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and Mr. King is absent, so his vote doesn't count, so the vote to town meeting is 5-0-0 in favor of supporting Article 6.
Thank you.
All right, quickly moving through the end, I do have one or two items I wanted to bring up, they'll be quick, I promise. Other topics? Any other topics?
Yes, upcoming hearings and meetings.
Okay, do you want to review them with us?
Yeah, I do. We have a tentative meeting scheduled for September 29th, that's a Thursday. It's a joint meeting with Redevelopment Authority, it's on the downtown urban renewal plan. The Redevelopment Authority is currently preparing an urban renewal plan under Chapter 121B of the state laws. The Planning Board takes a special role in the adoption of that, of that plan. You have to find it inconsistent with the master plan of the town when you, after you reviewed it. It also has to get a vote by town meeting on any zoning articles that come before it as well, too. Your, because of your role in, in the urban renewal plan, the Redevelopment Authority thought it was appropriate that you get a, we hold a workshop with the Planning Board and go through the concepts that are being considered in the, in the plan, and get your input as to the direction that should be taken in some of those instances.
I'm planning on attending, I know you sent an invitation out, so...
Yes.
Good, so you got, do we have a majority of the board showing up on the 29th?
Did you get, you asked for an RSVP, did, who?
I only got two responses.
Ms. Quirk, did you, you're going to respond positively?
I will respond positively, yes.
Mr. Baptiste, are you going to be able to attend the meeting on the 29th?
Sure.
Great, and Ms. Gleason?
I will be able to.
Mr. Corbett?
With you.
And I already, I don't know about Mr. King, but that's a majority of the board.
And Mr. King will be able to attend as well, too, I checked in with him.
So that's, that's, you've got the board's attendance lined up.
Great, thank you.
Any other topics under this item?
No. In the, in the agenda, there's a note that the upcoming hearings on the zoning articles were October 10th, but that will not be the case, since that's come this day.
Okay. Under this topic, other topics, I would, we did discuss this briefly earlier, I think that there would be value in having a joint workshop with the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board on, what's the project, 1222 Wareham LLC, Wareham MA3 LLC Site Plan Review. There's a lot of overlap and questions, and I think there would be some value in having a joint workshop. Offline, I've attempted to facilitate that, I don't know how to make that happen. I'm not the chair of this board, I'm not the chair of the Conservation Commission, but a workshop, I think, would be valued, the workshop would be subject to open meeting law, but it wouldn't be a public hearing, and where we could have discussion, debate. Mr. Rowley could answer questions, Mr. Price could answer questions, I think there's value in that.
I think that, that suggests we set it up for the 26th, because we have Neil Price coming for the 26th as well.
So I'm not sure how we make that happen at this point.
I think I write a note to the, to the Conservation Commission, asking for their participation.
How many, the question I have, good, good, that's great, let's, let's try and make that happen. But that would be a public hearing, would they have time to notice a Conservation Commission public hearing?
They only need two days to notice, they already have a hearing on this one already, don't they?
Not sure.
I think their hearing is already, I think their hearing is already opened on Fearing Hill.
Oh, they have hearings going, I just didn't mean, I meant that particular date, do they need to notice a public hearing on that date?
Yeah, they would, and that might be a problem when trying to get it to that date.
All right, perhaps you could talk to Mr. Pichette, and Ms. Slavin, and Mr. King, and come up with...
It's possible what they could do is set up a, no, it really should be a continued hearing there.
You already have a continued hearing.
They don't.
But they can come to ours.
But then, if they're going to participate, that's why I'm asking the logistics of them...
Yeah, good question.
They would have to notice a Conservation Commission public hearing as well. And then the dynamics of how we work together as a joint.
But if we put it on the agenda, is it discussion with Conservation under the open hear...
I don't know, I don't know, it's not the way the notice of the original public hearing was, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Just trying to get it done.
Yeah, I think this may be a question for town council, to see what kind of wording we have to set this up, make sure it's done correctly.
All right, well, the, I'll be glad to try and work, I have 100 emails on this, trying to get it resolved, but I believe...
What are we trying to resolve with them?
Well, they, the problem that they're running into is that we get a hearing with Mr. Price...
Yep.
And then separately, they have to schedule a hearing with Mr. Price, and it's not clear that we always hear or interpret what's said...
Agree.
In quite the same way, or the questions may be different. The thought was, on the public hearing hearing, Mr. Price, but on the workshop idea, which is different than the public hearing, some discussion on concerns and considerations, which maybe we have after the public hearing, but before we vote. We can't close the public hearing until they vote.
And they're saying they won't vote unless they meet with us?
I don't think they're saying that.
No, no, they're just saying they'd like to work with us, because it's common, common issues that we're trying to deal with, and that they're trying to deal with, and figure that getting more minds together on it would be more effective.
I disagree.
Okay, that was the thought, so... So how do we want Mr. Buckland to proceed? Do we want, we can at least invite them to attend the meeting, even if it's not a Conservation Commission meeting.
Yeah, they just have to be careful they don't deliberate on it, at our, at our...
And if it's only them coming to a meeting, Dave, I did talk to Dave, he said he could post a meeting notice, and...
And they could show up and...
They can show up as a group.
Be in a group, yeah. It's just that they couldn't deliberate or ask, or ask the probing questions they'd like to ask, probably, because they...
They could ask questions of us, right? Or...
It's open hearing.
I don't know, I think, this is something I'd like to talk to town council about, because this is...
I agree.
This steps into the realm of open meeting law that I'm not familiar with, and...
Okay, so let's defer to Mr. Buckland getting advice, and perhaps Mr. King and Ms. Slavin, and Mr. Pichette, and you chat, and Mr. Bowen, and decide how we can...
Right.
It's all in the interest of getting the information out to the community and the public, and, okay, so we'll, we'll wait to hear from you.
All right.
Thanks, it's, nothing is easy. Okay, moving on to board member comments, Ms. Quirk?
I have none at this time.
Mr. Baptiste?
Entertaining the most adjourned?
Second?
I, no, nay, I have comments.
You have comments?
Yes. Ms. Gleason?
I have no, no comments at this time.
I have two questions. The status of the response to Ware, from Wareham Retail Management, the last update we had was, Ms. Baldwin had sent them a letter, and they had not responded, and we had requested them to attend a meeting with us, is there any update on that?
The dumpsters, the dumpsters are still out there in the open as well, too, and it looks like a mess over there. They did mow the grass, but they haven't responded to the correspondence, as far as I'm aware.
And you had some concerns about the drainage conditions, there were drainage issues?
Nothing's been done there.
So I, I'm, I think we should request an enforcement action.
Ask, ask the building commissioner, the zoning enforcement officer, to take action.
Yeah, but we could request it, right?
We can request it, yes.
You think we're there, or do you want to wait, continue to wait for them to...
I'm not sure whether he has a holdover of them, because they have a CO at this point.
He could shut down their operations for unsafe conditions.
When you have a special permit that they're in violation of.
Which we could withdraw.
Yeah. I'll talk to Paul Turner and see what he can do to, to affect fines or whatever against them, if they don't show up.
Okay, so we'll, could we have that, at least a report on that on the, on the 26th?
Yes, you can.
Okay, and the next item is the citizens' complaint about lighting and master millwork. Is there any more on that?
Yeah, I talked to the building commissioner about this. As I recall, he was, he thought it was out of hand as well, too, with the amount of light that was coming off the site. It's supposed to be dark sky compliant, and it's glaring into the neighbor's house across the street, 100 yards away.
And the condition was also that it was be shut off, off after hours, there was supposed to be an automatic shut off.
That's right.
On that condition that I...
And it's not the case, they're, they're working off hours as well, too, apparently. The building commissioner, as far as I know, was aware of this, and was going to take action, I don't know if he has, or what action he's taken.
Okay, it seemed to me that Hannon was willing to work with us, he thought he was trying to live up to some requirement we made, but is he being cooperative, Hannon, too?
He's, he is cooperative to some extent, but I think there are still problems on the site that haven't been resolved.
I'm not aware of any on the site work. The lighting was an issue, but that's in the special permit. There was a question about the fence, well, the plan doesn't show the fence going all the way to Charlotte Furnace Road, it shows it where they had built it, so I'm not sure that there's anything left.
Well, other than the citizens' complaint about the light, which...
And the work hours as well, too.
And the work hours, yeah, that's in the special permit.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right, so there's probably no action for the board, other than just monitoring the situation, right?
Yeah, I can get a report from the building commissioner and see if there's anything further on the lighting.
Okay, I think we've, I think there's some more, I always like some more comments. I think we've talked about the upcoming schedule, the 26th, we've got Fearing Hill and 0...
30th and 0 Route 25.
Okay, and we've readjusted the schedule for October, so now, Mr. Baptiste, you're on.
Entertaining the motions adjourned?
Second.
Ms. Quirk?
Reluctantly, aye.
Mr. Baptiste? Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the Planning Board meeting of September 12th is closed at 8:44 PM.
About 7:44.
Oh, 7:44, actually correct, thank you, 7:44.